Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, could we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, welcome to Lorraine County Board of Commissioners, February 7th, 2018 meeting. Commissioner Lundey?
Our inspirational message for this morning, nothing is so strong as gentleness, nothing so gentle and loving as fortitude.
Our dog this morning, Tim?
Good morning, this is a little terrier mix, male, found in Illyria, and we have him in kennel 29. We have 18 other dogs at the kennel, so if this isn't your type, please come and visit us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Teresa, I'd like to move the presentations up on our agenda if the Board doesn't mind, so we can get these people back to work. Lorraine County Law Enforcement and Fire Memorial at the historic courthouse. Mr. Cordez, would you like to start?
My Ken, thank you Commissioner Kelo. We have a couple of presentations this morning, some really positive news. As you know, been going back and forth with renderings and so forth for this for quite a while, till we got it right. We needed it right, because we only get one shot at it, and it had to be good. So I'll defer to Ms. Davis, our facilities manager, who can make a full presentation, and we can all have a conversation after we see what we got to present.
You ready Karen?
I guess I'm ready.
And then we'll introduce our guests today. From the heart of Lorraine County, Sheffield Village.
The heart of it all.
That's right.
I can do the intros if you like.
Go right ahead.
Okay. Chief Young from Sheffield Village, Fire Chiefs, President of their Association, and Chief Dwayne Streeter from the great city of Avon Lake, home of Mayor Greg Zilka and Fran Tibbetts, of course.
Lundey now.
And Matt Lundey, Commissioner Lundey, he's President of Lorraine County Police Chiefs Association. We also have Chief McManus here from Kipton, thank you for joining us this morning. Now you can have the presentation.
Okay, great. All right. As you can see, I'm going to give you a little presentation about the Law Enforcement and Fire Memorial. This is a new addition to the grounds work that's been going on over the courthouse. Mr. Cordez came to me one day and says, you know, we really need to do something great here. So he had an idea, and my job is to take these ideas and put them on a piece of paper, and harass the architect to death until he gets it right. So, this first slide you'll see is 3rd Street, south end of the courthouse. So that shows that south addition, and then right to the west of 3rd Street is where the new police and fire memorial will go. You'll see, this gives you a little bit of a sharper view of that. Now, uh-oh, we're going to skip that one.
There you go.
We're going to write to the pretty picture. So what you're seeing here is a 6 by 10 foot, American black granite slab on a gray base. That slab is coming from a company on the west side of Cleveland, and the owner of that company is actually a La Grange resident.
Oh.
So it took us-
Took us forever.
Forever, to get to that point.
I need to point out that the original memorial, I found out that it was being made in China, and I discontinued that effort, so we-
With a 12 week lead time, wasn't it?
Right. So we wanted to have a locally produced, as best locally, it's Northeast Ohio, locally produced memorial. So it took a little more time to find it, but we did.
Yes, we did. In addition to that, the slabs and the base, you'll see six low walls and two meditation benches. The low walls closest to the monument have been set aside for use in attaching the last watch plaques from each individual agency, and they'll have downlighting, so that they'll be, no matter, you know, what time of day, or how cloudy it may be outside, they'll be able to see that. In the center is a 13 inch diameter eternal light, and that light will be on 24/7 forever. I believe Commissioner Kelo, you had made a recommendation that we put a heat ring around that light?
Correct.
Because now in this world of LEDs, they don't generate enough-
Correct.
-heat to keep the snow from piling up.
Like our stoplights.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. Another little tidbit that we wanted to include in this is, of course, Jim's request to the State on behalf of the Commissioners for additional funding to cover the project.
A portion of the project.
A portion, a portion of the project. We hope to be able to break ground as soon as the ground is able to break, and get the project done by early May.
You know Commissioners, the walls, and we'll speak to this, because I'm going to ask you to bring the Chiefs up. The eternal light is here to recognize, you know, people that fall in service. The knee walls up closest to the memorial, it is the intention to have brass tags, sizable ones, put there to recognize those that have given the sacrifice for others. So, that's what that's going to be used for, and that's why they're downlit. So I think this is going to be a fairly solemn memorial, it's going to pay a lot of respect to our first responders that are out there making a good life for all of us possible. And I know that, I showed you a couple of renderings of this, but I think we got it right, I think it finally looks great. That's going to be stamped concrete, much like it is up in the front.
Correct.
And you can see the height of the memorial there. There's an actual person standing next to it, so you see it's sizable, it's imposing, as it should be. And I'm sorry we didn't blow up the inscriptions, but the inscriptions are, in my mind, inspiring. So, it's going to be beautiful.
Yeah, significant project, because it was great when you brought it to us, and I think we all jumped right on board, it's something we really need to do, regards to having the Workers Memorial, the World War II Memorial, and now having our Safety Forces Memorial. I think it's significantly important.
Right, Karen's showing you the front of the building here, and you can just point out where the memorials are up front, that we've enhanced.
Okay. On the left-hand side of the screen is the location of the Workers Memorial. That memorial's a sandstone block memorial, it's been there for quite a few years, I'm not exactly sure when it was installed, but we were able to use the stamped colored concrete to enhance the walkway up to it, make it more prominent. We included two meditation benches, and something I failed to mention earlier is that these benches are made from repurposed sandstone from the south steps of the courthouse. So the benches add the law and fire memorial, the Workers Memorial, and also the World War II memorial, which is on the right side of the screen there, those benches were made from repurposed sandstone. Both of these memorials are now more prominently displayed on the north front of the building, which is more or less our ornamental front, that's where the Pops Orchestra performs, and a lot of activities for the downtown area happen right there in front of that building. And we'll also include a cleaning and sealing of that sandstone Workers Memorial, and a cleaning, polishing, buffing of the World War II memorial.
The Workers Memorial presented some issues, as you know, it was sitting under the trees, and it's really not a good state of repair. The acid cleaning should clean most of it, but it's a sandstone block, it's not the best thing to make a memorial out of. So, we will have it acid cleaned as best we can, and then put a sealant on it, but there's no real way of polishing sandstone. I believe the WWII memorial is out of marble?
It's granite.
Granite, so we can have that taken down and rebuffed, and we intend on doing that. And around the walk there with the bench, you see that's concrete that's going to be around that, on each side, behind the stamped concrete. So, you know, a lot of people didn't even know the WWII memorial was up there in front of the building.
It was camouflaged.
It was camouflaged, and so I think that this is going to be great, we're going to have a rededication of those memorials, as we did a rededication of the courthouse. So, it's time to do this while we have the opportunity, because it won't get done if we don't do it now.
Right. I guess I'd like to invite both Chiefs on up to-
Why don't you go back to the drawing of the Police and Fire Memorial, and then you want to-
Then we'll bring the Chiefs up, yeah, I was letting you finish. Yeah, can you go? Chief, would you like to join us?
Come on.
Do we want to leave that screen up Jim, or would we like to give them 15 minutes of fame?
I'm going to go back to the cameras.
There you go, thank you. Right up there guys, if you'd like to introduce yourselves, so everybody knows who you are.
Good morning Commissioners, my name's Jeff Young, I'm the Fire Chief in Sheffield Village, no other comments after that.
The heart of Lorraine County.
Yeah, that one. And I'm the President of the Lorraine County Fire Chiefs Association. First, when Mr. Cordez approached us, the Association, his idea, quite frankly, we were thrilled. I mean, this is a very, very nice thing to do, and we were moved by, you know, the thought that you guys came up with this, and came up with this idea and proposed it. So it meant a lot to the fire service in Lorraine County. And it's a pretty big thing, because we actually have the Fire Chiefs Association working with the Police Chiefs Association on a project, and we're not fighting with each other.
And I could add to that, because I work with both the associations, and it's challenging occasionally.
I'm just kidding, we get along fine. This is a good thing. Obviously, we don't want to put people's names on there, but it needs to be recognized. And just, in the little bit of research that I've done through the Chiefs Association, number one, thankfully, there aren't that many. And they date back to 1915, I mean, they go back a long way, so it's, I didn't know about them, and I've been a firefighter for 42 years. Shame on me, you know, I had no idea. And so, the idea of the memorial, and putting these names on there, then they truly won't be forgotten. Anybody that looks at it, they're going to see these names and remember them forever. So I think it's a great thing, I'm very grateful to the Commissioners, and Mr. Cordez, and Ms. Davis, for working at this thing and considering it, it's, without being gushy about it, it's just a very nice thing to do, and I'm very proud to be here today, this is my first Commissioners' meeting.
Welcome.
We're every Wednesday at 9:30.
I watch them on TV.
Sure you do.
I do. But anyway, not all of them, I'll be honest. But I just, I mean, truthfully, from my association, and from me personally, it's a heartfelt thanks for your consideration. This is really a nice thing you're considering, and I think it's a great thing for Lorraine County. The other monuments are really great, you know, we make sure when we're downtown, we take our grandkids, and they know all the monuments and what they mean, and adding this one will just make it even better, so, thank you very much.
Thanks Chief.
Thank you.
Appreciate your support.
My name's Dwayne Streeter, I'm the Police Chief of Avon Lake, and I have the pleasure of representing all the Police Chiefs and Law Enforcement in Lorraine County by being President of the Lorraine County Chiefs Association. This is Chief McManus, who is in charge of our Memorial Committee. As you guys well know, once a year in May, we do our memorial presentation to remember the fallen officers of Lorraine County, and you guys definitely participate in that, we really thank you for that. And when this idea came up, and we've kicked this around for a number of years, of having a central location, because in years past, we move our memorial around to different places, and sometimes that can be challenging, but in having one central location to represent those that have given the ultimate sacrifice in Lorraine County is outstanding. Conversation I had with Mr. Cordez, and to this day I have to thank him, it's just amazing, that it shows you from a little conversation how things develop, and when I got this email, I still, I had to look at it three times, because I went, this is unbelievable, and for law enforcement, this is huge. We really, really thank the Commissioners, Mr. Cordez, Ms. Davis, for putting this together. I thought, you know, when the idea came up, there's a lot of work that goes into these projects, and I know that, so I was expecting that, then all of a sudden, like, this just made our job. It's just amazing. We're floored. Law enforcement in Lorraine County is just, everybody I've talked to about this, a little bit behind the scenes so far, is just amazed. I think once the public finds out about this, to represent this at a place that's there, I mean, the county has decided to keep that building, and make it nice, and add this to that, I'm just floored. And the renderings from the architect, it's just amazing, that it's going to represent this for long after all of us are gone, our grandchildren, and this is just amazing. So again, I want to thank everyone, and the support from the Lorraine County Chiefs Association is definitely there in the future for that, so, thank you so much.
Thank you Chief, appreciate it.
That was a conversation down in Akron, we went down to see the 911.
We did, we were having lunch, and everybody thought I was just eating my hamburger and not paying attention. But we had a very, thank you for mentioning it, we had a very brief conversation, that there really wasn't much in a unified way to recognize our people that have worked so hard for us, and some that have been lost in that work. And I brought that concept back to you a little bit after that, and you were very excited about being able to participate, and to demonstrate the support in this community.
Chief?
I like to add-
You gotta go up there.
Because I didn't come up with this on my own, sometimes I like to think I got good ideas, but, and so I want to give support to one young gentleman, his name's Ethan Trampish, his father's a North Ridgeville policeman, and after one of our police memorials, he came up with the idea, is there any way we can do a Lorraine County one? And he thought as an Eagle Scout project, he wanted to look into this. So he is the one that also prompted some of that, so I want to give him public recognition for prompting this idea, and coming to Mr. Cordez, so I really want to thank him, and he'll be working with us as we go along here, and he's a really, really motivated young man, which is outstanding for the youth of our community, and to be involved in things like that.
If we have a ribbon cutting, we'll have to have him give a pair of scissors.
Eagle Scout project, and he'll be involved, and I will have him involved in the different stages as we go along here. But again, thank you guys so much, this is just outstanding.
Yeah, because you literally used to move this event around each year, right?
Yeah, we continue to move around, in fact, May 9th is our memorial this year, because Police Memorial Day is May 15th of every year, and we represent that, and obviously they have a big celebration in Washington DC, and also in Cleveland, and we have a local one, and we moved around, this year on May 9th it'll be in Wellington, and that's where we'll be holding the facility. But obviously, in the future, we have one spot to hold it, and this is, that's what we're, I think is great, and the spot there, looking out, and in the county seat, is just, that's something that's going to be longer, thanks.
Hang on Chief, can we move that fast enough, May 9th, so we can do it here?
Oh, well, the thought is great, but we have gone into planning for about eight months of that, so, I don't want to take away from that, so, but I guarantee you one thing, and Chief Young and I have discussed this, the dedication of this will be a huge, huge for law enforcement and the fire service and EMS in Lorraine County, and I would expect a large turnout for that.
Good.
Thank you.
I just can't say enough good words about what the dedicated men and women do in law enforcement and firefighting, and, you know, I spent 20 years as a reporter before I got in the government, and had the chance firsthand to see firefighters on the scene, and police on the scene, and, you know, I know you see the stories on the news, and you read about it in the paper, but when you're actually there at the location, and you see firsthand, you know, firefighters walking into a blazing building, putting water on a fire when it's freezing outside, and they've got, they're covered in water and icing up, and pulling people out of buildings, I can't tell you how many stories I was at where people were rescued out of buildings, people and pets. And then, you know, police trying to gain control of volatile situations, arrived at a lot of scenes, and mob scenes early, and the work that is done by firefighters and police, and then they go home to their families and try to disconnect from what happened at the office that day. But you guys really see the difficult challenges of life that a lot of us don't see, we may read about it or watch it on TV, but I just can't say enough about how you have to be a really special person to be a firefighter, or a police officer. So, thank you for your dedication.
Thank you guys.
And that light, that eternal light that you came up with towards the end, that just like was icing on the cake, I love that.
Yeah, I only got three olives before I came up with that. The, you know, I, gee, some things just, this was a, as we designed this, it started gaining its own, we just kept adding a little here, a little there, until we came up with what was right, and the eternal light is right.
It is.
Because the light should not go out on those that have paid the sacrifice, and so, I'm grateful to Commissioner Kelo though, when I was talking to the Chiefs this morning about that, about the heat ring, because I keep forgetting we're not using-
Right.
-halogens anymore, and that would take care of itself, because it would more than keep the glass warm, but with an LED in there, you don't generate that heat.
Like I said, it's the same problem we've got with our stoplights nowadays, I mean, they don't, they're covered in snow, the heat doesn't, there is no heat, so you're getting your lights covered, so when we saw the eternal light, so we need the heat ring that, to really make sure it always shines through, and not covered in snow and ice.
Right, and then the downlighting on the walls, and we don't have that in the rendering, but the downlighting will be there for the plaques, so the light will shine onto those eternally. And also, we put in some service electrical, so that would have ceremonies, you know, we tried to think way down the road, so we're not running a big and long extension cord across the lawn to do things, so everything's going to be there, and it'll complement the back of the courthouse, the things we've done at the back with the walls there, it'll really give some balance to the whole look back there. And of course, the restoring of the front of the courthouse, I'm very excited about that. If you haven't seen it, it's really starting to come together up in the front of the courthouse, and that's going to really pop, and it's going to look right across to Illyria Park, their park there, and I think you're going to see a lot more ceremonies on the front of the courthouse. Now, we ripped out all the old renovations they did, the planters, and we've tried to bring it back to as much an historical look as possible. Let's not forget that we're also downlighting and uplighting the courthouse, so that is all going to come together, and it's going to look tremendous in downtown. And I'm excited about the lighting, because if I remember right Karen, we did choose the LED that can change color, right?
Right.
So, like, if, so, we can, if, say there's something going on with it at the memorial, we could turn the courthouse red, or we could turn it blue, to recognize the events that are going on, and that was not a large cost to do that, because we were putting the lighting in anyway. So, you know, this is going to add a whole dimension down here, and a whole, a lot of respect to a lot of people that have gone unrecognized too long. So I want to thank you for your support, because as soon as I came to you, you were, wow, we're on this, we're in it, figure it out, bring it back to us, and it was there. And hopefully the State will assist us with some of the funding we've requested, and we're going to talk about that a little later in another presentation. But, you know, I asked you if you wanted to wait for that, and you were really good about it, you said, we can't wait, we got to get this done. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next up, let's go right into the capital funding requests.
Chief, you don't have to stay with us.
Yeah, you guys got work to do.
As I told you, you don't have to be respectful, I think you got to sit there. Everybody gets up and walks out on us, so it's-
Not like a council meeting.
Thanks again guys, I'll be in touch, Chief Young, on, like, we talked about the procedures and things we're going to do, so, work together on that, so we have a clear understanding.
Thank you gentlemen.
Thanks guys.
You bet.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I am here to talk about the Second Annual Restaurant Week.
Beautiful.
It seems everyone is hungry for more.
Yes.
Bah-dum-bum, right?
Jim, why don't you introduce yourself, we'll go through that, and then I'll get you onto the computer screen, okay?
Okay, great. My name is Jen Kennedy, I am the interim Director of Visit Lorraine County. I've also brought Amanda Wright, who is the Marketing and Sales Coordinator of Visit Lorraine County.
Okay.
Okay, we are excited to announce the Second Annual Lorraine County Restaurant Week. It is going to be held March 2nd through the 11th, and that timing was purposeful, in terms of Cleveland Restaurant Week ends the day before, so we're going to actually just kind of ride that wave right into Lorraine County Restaurant Week. So people will be thinking about restaurants, they'll hear the buzz for two weeks before, and then we'll go right into ours. As you know, thank to the Commissioners, and Jim for sponsoring Lorraine County Restaurant There we go. Again, what we're trying to do, what we want to do is let everyone in the area know all of the great restaurants that we have in Lorraine County. We've got a lot of fine dining options, we want to change people's habits in terms of going to the same place, we want to introduce them to a new favorite place, and get them familiar with a place where they can celebrate their special occasions. Last year, it was very, very successful, we had a few restaurants that sold 200, 300 meals, so what we want to do is continue that success, make this an annual event. This year, we were, last year being our first year, we were a little bit more pliable in terms of our approach. This year, we kind of surveyed everyone last year and found out, you know what, let's all stick with the same message, three courses for $30. Last year, I think there was a little too much food, and the prices, there was some variation in prices, so this year it was three courses for $30, an easy message, consistent at all 10 participating restaurants. We do have 10 participating restaurants, a few new faces this year, Bistro 83, Cole's Public House, excuse me, Bistro 83 in North Ridgeville, Cole's Public House in Amherst, Cork Tree Tavern in Amherst, Jackalup Lakeside in Lorraine, Nemo Grill in Avon, Parker's Grill in Avon Lake, Supori Italian Grill in Avon Lake, Sorento Restaurante in Sheffield, The Unicorn in Grafton, and Veranda Bistro and Bar in Avon. So we've got a really nice selection. And, you know, we have all of the menus, which our website right now is going live, I have it slated to go live at 9:30, so it hasn't been up, so all of the menus will be announced. There actually is a few menus, I will note that we are missing, we are missing three, one of the chefs has been out ill with the horrible flu going around, so that's one of the holdups, but we anticipate that we have those up and running on our website. Not only can people check out the hours and the menus, but if they, the restaurant subscribes to OpenTable, they can make the reservation from a click of a button on our website. So, you know, I'm not going to run through all, everything, but we've got some awesome things, we've got a surf and turf with a filet, and a lobster tail, we've got some short ribs, we've got pan-seared chicken breast, we've got some really awesome things. I will say, Bistro 83, for instance, their salads, a lot of locally grown GMO-free greens, I thought that was a really awesome addition, so, I'm really excited about what, some of the restaurants and their menus. Again, we are incentivizing people to dine out with dinner on us, so what we're going to be doing is we're going to have one $100 gift card for people that dine at two restaurants. They will be entered to win the $100 gift card, and for people that dine at one restaurant, they will be entered to win 10 $50 gift cards. So that's very similar to the concept that we do, so in essence, we bought their dinner for, the winners. And basically, what we are doing is, we are arming every restaurant again this year with a card, in which they will give to the patron upon ordering their Restaurant Week menu, they're going to sign the back, and then they're going to put their name and their zip code and their email address, and they're also going to notate if it's the first time that they have visited that restaurant, that'll give us a little information about who's coming, and a way to keep in touch with them. So then we can kind of track, you know, how many new faces that we brought into the restaurants as well. And then when they turn those in to us, that's how we're going to be drawing, the people that we're buying dinner for, in essence. I'm actually, my eyes are getting old, so I am going to kind of read off my paper here, because it's a little too small, but I wanted to tell you a little- read off my paper here, because it's a little too small. But I wanted to tell you a little bit about how we're spreading the word. We're doing a lot of really cool new things to spread the word, and very, very targeted, so that we can be more effective. Again, we're going to be doing digital advertising. And when I say the digital advertising, it's display advertising. So, think about, you know, you're going online and you're seeing those banners down the side of the websites. Basically, we buy into a package of websites, so there's hundreds of different websites, but they will include the Food Network. There's one that's puzzles.com, cleveland.com, men's fitness is often in there, ladies' day is often in there. So, it's just, it's kind of a whole network that we buy into. So, and also with that, we'll also do retargeting. So, for instance, if you see or click on our ad or visit our website, you will continue to get served that ad. That's very similar to some of the things that we've done. Additionally, we're doing Facebook and Instagram ads, but I have to tell you what we're doing a little bit different. We are doing the ads based on age, age, behavior, income, and location. So, that's something that we kind of always do, is we target people based on how old they are, what they make, where they live. But what we've actually been able to do, because of the activities that we've done, is create what's called a look-alike audience. And this is brand-new, and it's really cool. So, over the past year, we've held numerous different food events. We've learned a little bit about who likes to come to our events, and who are the foodies in the area. And we're using that information then to create people that look like them, or find people that look like them, and actually target those people. So, we're being, again, a little bit more behavioral targeted. In addition, something else that we're doing new this year is called geo-fencing. And honestly, I've been obsessed with doing this, and I've been waiting for the right time to do this, but what we're actually doing is drawing a virtual fence around certain areas. So, I'm gonna pick on a restaurant, maybe in Cuyahoga County in Westlake, you know, a real fine dining restaurant in Westlake. And if you get out your phone and you get onto Facebook, or Instagram, or click on a Safari web hit, or, you know, you open your Safari, you will then be part of our target. And you will be delivered our ads for the duration of the campaign. So, we've identified six different fine dining restaurants in Rocky River and Westlake and Vermillion. And even actually, there's a few in Lorraine County in which you will be in part of that fence. So, it's a really cool way to target people based on what they're doing. And this is what's happening in today's world. This is how, the world that we're living in, but it's actually gonna be able to help us find the people that are interested in coming to Restaurant Week. In addition, we're going to Thursday. Thank you to Commissioner Kalo, who has agreed to come on Cleveland Now, which is a Cleveland-based prepackaged program for WIL. We are actually, was able to negotiate a free digital ad on Ohio Magazine. So, their e-newsletter, which goes out to over 250,000 people in the state of Ohio. So, we're also doing local radio. Thank you to WEOL, DOW, WOBL, who's going to have us on air as well. And we're going to look to our local papers to hopefully help get the word out. And we're going to be doing a lot of our own earned media. So, a lot of our own organic social posts and everything like that. In addition, all of the restaurants have received a little packet from us. In this packet, they have questions and answers for their staff. We have scripts for their staff. We have contact information that they can text us at 11 o'clock at night if they need to. They can get ahold of us. We do sample Facebook posts for them, sample Instagram posts. We provide them with all of the information that they need, posters, window clings, Restaurant Week cards, little packages on how to do it. We even put a Sharpie in the package for them, so they have something to sign it with. So, we feel that they're completely armed and ready to go. In addition, I have been meeting with not only the restaurant owners, the general managers, the chefs. So, we've done a lot of work, and I mean, even as of last night, I'm sending them messages to meet with their waitstaff. Start the meetings now with the waitstaff, so that the waitstaff is engaged and aware, because that's one of the areas of opportunities that we saw to enhance on this year.
Yeah, that's probably the most critical one. And, you know, as I said, when I went into some of the restaurants, obviously, I can't participate in a contest, but, you know, when I went in there just to see how they were running it, and didn't say who I was, didn't ask about the Restaurant Week, but just to see how they handled it, that, you know, some were much better than others. And I think training that waitstaff is just critical. You know, I think with the burger battle, we made it seem like a more fierce competition, you know, and I think if they can kind of get that competitive spirit going there, between the restaurants and the waitstaff realizes the importance of wanting to win this thing, that would help out.
Well, there's really no winner or loser in the Dining Week. We're not really...
Sorry. I shouldn't have said winner.
Yeah.
But I mean, just make it a competitive thing. We're obviously, you wanna drive as many people in your restaurant as possible and get the word out.
Well, and last year, we did announce, if you remember, we announced who sold the most meals.
Right.
And we did talk about that. And I actually have to say that we did notice that there's a few that did not sell as many and/or didn't give us their numbers. So, in terms of winning and losing, that's, I think, where the only, you know, the opportunity is to say, "Look who did really well." And we know that that's why.
Yeah. You know, what we really don't wanna do is step too much on the best of Lorraine County.
Right.
They usually break it out into several categories at the best of Lorraine County. So, that's another great event that we're hoping to put some energy into and reinvent this year. So, we'll let them, we'll let the people all vote on those things. So, it's, we had a couple changes this year, and we had a few come off the list, but not because they didn't, one, didn't wanna participate, they're going to a reorganization, and it would've been a little challenging for them to be in Restaurant Week. And, you know, hopefully, we'll be adding some additional ones. The Veranda, I saw you look, Commissioner, and I'll tell you, that, that is where Rue 256 used to be.
254 used to be.
254.
That's the new name of it?
Yes, that's the new name. In fact, I sent Jen out yesterday to chase them down and see if they wanted to participate.
Same people, Jen, or new people?
It's my understanding that it's new people.
I think it's...
I love that place.
I think it may be new. I know you liked it there.
I love Rue, so...
But I was glad they wanted to come on board pretty quick, and I think you had to chase the Italian restaurant in Avon Lake about six times. So, that's why the menus aren't there. Right up until yesterday, we were still trying to, they're a tough group. A lot of these places, they work lots of hours, and just getting them to go with the concept is a bit, a bit challenging. So, we're hopeful that we're gonna have a very ambitious week and see a lot, a lot of activity.
I'm looking forward to it once again, because I like to eat.
Are you gonna eat at every restaurant this time?
I'm gonna try. I can do the burgers, because you can grab lunch and dinner. Like, I was just in New Orleans about a week and a half ago, and they were kicking off their Restaurant Week. It's during the pre-Mardi Gras up to, and they actually do a lunch and a dinner. I was fortunate enough, Antoine's Restaurant, which is an amazing restaurant in New Orleans, they had their lunch special for the Restaurant Week. Everybody was at $20.18. They do it by the year. And Tabasco's their national sponsor to help offset and pace for all the advertising, but it was just unbelievable what they do there. And you're talking, New Orleans, which, you know, a very large community, but just the emphasis they had on it and their signage. And actually, the waiter we had was really, I think I was telling Jim about it, I asked the gentleman, he had a little 50 button on his, you know, sport coat, and they're all, you know, sport coat, tux. So, what's the 50 for? And this gentleman, his little Cajun accent, longest-serving waiter, he has been at Antoine's for over 50 years. And when he started, his, he said, "My profession is a waiter," and his real thick accent. They had a 10-year apprentice program when he started, before you could wait a table. He said, "Now, it's easy. You only have a three-year apprentice program to wait a table." That's how serious the food scene is down there in those restaurants. So, I mean, I'm hoping, that's where, it's easier to get the burgers, because you can grab a lunch and a dinner. Grabbing 10 dinners...
Three-course dinners.
Yeah, is kind of tough in that week and a half to get them. I'll get half a dozen. I'm pretty good at going out to eat. But the burgers are easier to get them all, because you can do lunch and dinner, so. But yeah, I'm looking forward to Cleveland Now tomorrow, so.
Well, this...
Now, let's kick this off. And I've had a talk to a couple of our restaurateurs who weren't as participatory.
Good.
So...
Good. Well, this is gonna be great, because we actually have numbers that we can compare last year to this year, so we can see the growth. And we can see, you know, and again, we're talking to those people now that have participated in two, one, two, three different food events. So, we're having, we're able to engage them. So, thank you for your support.
Very nice.
Looking forward to it. Thanks, Jen.
Great job.
When we do a Cupcake Week, too?
That's on the board. We've got a whole slew.
Yeah, and it's, it's in our visitor's guide, so we have to do it.
We have to do it.
We haven't announced in there. But we're eating something in the spring, aren't we? Why don't you do a little teaser on that?
Thanks to Jim, we've been working really hard to get some, a calendar of some different events. So, we're thinking chicken wings in the spring, you know, Indians kickoff, and it's a great time to talk about chicken wings. So, we're kind of working on chicken...
The Battle of the Wings.
Yep, something along those lines. We're still, we've got a few restaurants kind of helping us needle it through. We like to pull in the experts to make sure we're thinking through it all. And I know there was some, some talk about some rounds coming up.
Hopefully, we can put, we're trying to figure out, we have enough location with sit-down to have the Battle of the Rounds with the pizza. You know, we want, you know, remember our goal, our target here, and we should really talk about that shit for a second. We're trying to bring people here, but we're also trying to keep people here. And, and too many dollars have left Lorraine County for other communities. So, we have to engage our community. Who's gonna wanna come here when our own people don't even stay here? There's, there's a lot of great stuff to the, to the east and our neighbors. I understand that, but there is good stuff here, too.
There's great stuff, and that's just good stuff.
And so, our targets are to help people recognize their own community, and then invite their friends from outside the community to come here, and/or get people to come across, because we offer easy parking, we offer, you know, lower fee, lower cost. And, and so, we're gonna keep pushing on that and have these different little things that'll bring some understanding to the, to the value of staying home here and dining. I'm excited about the wings. That was, and there's a lot of, a lot of places that didn't fall into the burger or the dining scene that will fall into, you know, the wings.
The wing thing.
The wing thing, yeah, sure. But with the, with the pizzas, it was a little bit hard, because there's not a lot of sit-down pizza restaurants anymore. That, and really a takeout, a special takeout, doesn't sound so appealing. You know, we wanted to have something where you dined in, you had a pizza you'd dine in.
An experience.
So, we're looking at that. I mean, one of the best places in Lorraine is...
Yallos.
Yallos, but...
You can't dine in there.
You can't dine.
There's a little two-top there.
Yeah, you can barely stand inside the foyer there. So, and they have a great pizza. So, how do you, how do you, how do you deal with that? And so, we're, we're working on it.
Yep, we're working on it. And we've been talking cupcakes already, and we've been talking burgers, and looking at scoops, and maybe doing something in ice cream. So, we've got a fattening year coming up.
Beautiful.
Okay.
Thanks, Jen.
Thanks, Jen.
Thanks, Jen. All right.
Mike's here.
Mr. Challander, capital funding request. Are you presenting that to us today?
Again?
It doesn't matter. If you, if you would, Mike, I mean, I asked you to put it together, because we were in a hurry, and you did. So, if you wanna walk through it, I'll, I'll two-step with you, okay?
Okay. My name is Mike Challander. I work for the Sustainable Office of Sustainability with the county commissioners on the fifth floor here. I put together a plan of the three projects that Lorraine County submitted to the state for the budget. And the first one was the Lorraine County Law Enforcement and Fire Memorial, which you're familiar with.
We just did the presentation on it, Mike, prior to you getting here.
Yeah.
And that cost was $250,000. And the amount requested from the state is 150. And non-state funds supporting the project would be 100,000. And then the Charles Berry Bridge, the LED multi-lighting. This photograph that you see here is on our website, so we take a lot of pride in, in that bridge and, and the lighting changes that can be done to it. The cost, in 2007 was the first time that LED lights was installed on the bridge. And over time, you know, with improvements in technology and wear and tear from the weather at that location, the lighting needs to be replaced. And the estimated cost is $260,000. And the amount of the state request is 150. And non-state funds supporting the project would be 110,000.
Yeah, let me interrupt real quick, though. The non-state funds, not only county funds, though, I've also talked to Lorraine City Port Authority. They said they'd be participating with...
Yeah, he has, at the end of his, he'll show some of the partners.
Oh, okay, all right then, Mike. I didn't have anything on it.
But I do, but I do wanna talk a little bit about the bridge. I wanna thank Don's department for putting together the request. We only had a few days and, and to get this done and all these requests down to the state. The lighting that was installed some time ago, actually, the computer programming and the controls were, were a problem after just a few years. The lights themselves, we kept repositioning them, trying, trying to light the bridge. We actually were not able to do color schemes anymore. We were just able to basically put some color on the bridge. When it first went in, you could actually change the light. There was little shows that could go on. The, the bridge now is undergoing a significant renovation by the state. For those that are not aware, the state provides the funding for us to operate the bridge, but they all, they do all the big maintenance on the bridge, so it's a, it's a collaboration. The, so, those lights are not gonna be restored as part of that renovation of the, of the bridge. We either put new lights on, or we don't have lights. The, and those initial lights, I don't know, were they LEDs when they were put in? I did not think they were LEDs.
I don't think they were LEDs back then.
I, I believe they were, they were halogens on there with, and they weren't true color. They were like color shield lights.
Right.
And you don't get the true color of the, of the light. With LEDs, if you've, if you've ever seen good color LED lights, they, they really have a vibrant...
The bridges in Cleveland.
Color to them.
The bridges in Cleveland.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just amazing.
And, and, you know, this, this is a project that is, is probably as significant as anything we've ever wanted to do, because the Black River Landing is bringing people down for Rockin' on the River. They have a lot of events down there. The streetscape in Lorraine was approved by the city just the other day. Hopefully, we're seeing some movement on the Spitzer Building down there. I'm hopeful that they're gonna continue and maybe get progress there. We have a great community on the other side of the bridge with, with the River, River...
Harbor Walk.
Harbor Walk, excuse me, Harbor Walk. This bridge just pulls it all together down there. And...
Plus, we're working on the lakefront Lorraine County plan to bring people to the lakefront.
You know, this, this is, this is needed. This is needed...
That's the focal point, Jim, not that, when we did this back in '06 and '07, actually lit it up, at the time, I was cheering a Relay for Life in Lorraine, and then we held it, the Black River Landing. When we lit that up purple and white, it was really outstanding. And then when it lifted and a ship came through, it was just an amazing sight to see. I mean, it's, I mean, it's the second-largest Baskel Bridge in the world. You know, we have it here, Fort Worth, in Lorraine County, where everything's happening at. And having that lit up, I think, is, I mean, it's a welcoming part to the community from the north. It's just unbelievable. You've got Lorraine Lighthouse out there, all the boating traffic, all the entertainment, the residential, the business district coming back. You know, you mentioned the Broadway redevelopment. I mean, that's only happened because of the lack of federal funds coming, a million and a half dollars to help do it.
Sure.
I mean, I think this is just something really needs to be updated and running again once the bridge is all fixed.
The, the, I'm hopeful that if we, we can get way into the funding stream on this, deep enough that we'll have the, today, the computer can sync with the music. We should add, you know, along with the lighting, we should add some, some speakers onto the bridge so that we can have a music and light presentation. That could happen before or after concerts down on the Black River Landing. We can work in conjunction with the Lorraine City Port Authority. There's, the possibilities are endless. I will say that we did get some state funding to assist with the first lighting of the bridge, but they were never really in support of the, the lighting on the bridge or those uses. But as Commissioner Lundey has pointed out to me, they, they generally use these pictures.
I was, I was gonna say, every, every time that I've seen ODOT make reference to this bridge, they use this picture or a similar picture. So, if you're going to use a picture with the bridge lit, let's light the bridge.
And, and we, we were forbidden from using ODOT monies to maintain that system. They weren't in agreement with us maintaining it, using funding we received to operate the bridge. So, it presented some challenges. I, I think we're better positioned now to relook at this issue, and it's even more significantly needed now than it was back then. So, I'm hopeful. And that's the bridge. The next one is, is something that has some significant community impact, and I know Commissioner Lundey has been really, and Commissioner Kokoski have really been pushing something on this. So, why don't we go to the next one?
The next one would be reopening the Golden Acres facility as Recovery One, Lorraine County.
The picture. Do you have a picture in regards to that?
Thank you.
Boy, it looks so dark.
And Recovery One is a one-stop recovery facility to address Ohio's opioid epidemic. The estimated project cost is 850,000. It's for roof elevator repairs, HVAC improvements, and tuck pointing on the sandstone. And the amount of the request to the state is 500,000. And non-state funds... And the amount of the request to the state is 500,000 and non-state funds supporting the project would be 350,000. And here's a list of, of all three projects and the, the non-state funding support and where it would come from.
And if we could just, just elaborate a little bit more, I, I think it's important for the community to know and for members of the media to know that, you know, I think sometimes the, the last two weeks of December, a lot of folks put up the sails and they just kind of sail on to the new year. And that wasn't happening here at the administration building. I can't say enough good words about everyone here in this building that pitched in so that we could get all these proposals in. Also, and Lori knows because we were over at that building several times during those last couple of weeks, a lot of folks said, well, there's no way you can get it done, it's around the holidays and it won't be possible to get everything done. Well, we did. And the collaboration is the, the county commissioners in conjunction with Addis of Lorraine County, the Lakota Way, the Lorraine County Board of Mental Health, also the Nord Family Foundation, it's a heck of a partnership, a great partnership. Everybody coming together to work on what we're calling this Recovery One initiative. This county so badly needs a one-stop, you know, treatment facility so that we can address this area that's been very hard hit by the opioid epidemic. And I can't say enough good things about all these partners who came out instead of saying, well, can we do that in January or it's around the holidays, do we have to do it now? Everybody came out, they submitted all kinds of information, we put together the proposal based upon input that we received from all of our partners. And this is a pretty big ask of the state, but, you know, the state has told us over and over again that they are looking for these kind of projects. They've told us that they're very concerned about the opioid epidemic and the whole purpose is to first, you know, stabilize this building. You have to understand, we did have residents in there up until, what, a year and a half ago?
Year and a half.
Probably, yeah, a year and a half ago. So, but to stabilize it moving forward, we need to address the roof, the elevator, HVAC, do some tuck pointing, you know, and there's substantial costs involved with that. Obviously, we're asking the state to participate with 500,000. We are willing to make an investment around 200,000. And the Nord Family Foundation had asked that we, you know, submit our proposal to the state. They plan on submitting to their foundation board for consideration for monies to also be invested. I don't know if they've had that board meeting yet or if they're having it, but they've said that they're submitting that to their board. So, this is a, a really strong partnership. We hope that the state gives this very serious consideration. This would help our county tremendously. We're losing so many loved ones. We need to get back on track, but to do that, we need a one-stop recovery facility. And Lori, as you know, when we were at that meeting the other week, they talked about how they felt like everybody was out there working hard, but everybody was doing their own thing. And here is an opportunity, as they said, one of the main parts of their research, one of the main findings was the severe need, the very bad need for everybody to work in conjunction and work together and to centralize it. So, we hope that this will be a model that others will try to duplicate. However, it always comes down to money and making it happen and we're going to need support from the state to make this work. We would strongly encourage the residents of this county to reach out to Senator Manning, Representative Manning, Representative Stein, Representative Ramos. We submitted this to them along with these other projects, saying that these are, you know, countywide projects, all these benefit the county. And we hope that it will be given a serious consideration. It's very competitive down there for capital projects, as I know, but this is one that without question really fits the community's probably most important need right now. But I, I just want to thank everyone involved with making this possible. Karen was over there opening the building and Lori was over there, Ted was always checking in and working with us on this, being very supportive. Jim was working on things, we were talking to Jerry about legal issues around it and everything else and, you know, nobody said, hey, I'm off for two weeks for the holidays. Everybody said, let's just roll up our sleeves and get this done. And we got it done. And to get all these proposals in, just so, you know, I think we had to have them in on, was it January 5th or some, January 5th, so, run through the calendar of the holidays and you realize that you'll lose a lot of days in between there. But I just can't say enough good things about how everybody pulled together, rolled up their sleeves to get these projects submitted. And now we need the community to weigh in, call your representatives in Columbus, tell them about how important these projects are and hopefully we'll get some, some good news that they'll be funding these projects.
Been through a lot of meetings throughout the county regarding the opioid epidemic and this is the missing piece. This is the missing piece, the, the police assisted recovery, somebody goes to a police station, says they need help, we have nowhere to take them. Somebody needs to detox, they, they're detoxing on the jail floor, so this is definitely a place where there could be phases, come in, detox, inpatient and, and then also we have a sober living problem, waiting lists all through, throughout the county. So, this is a much-needed facility and hopefully the state will see fit to give us the funding that we need for this because it's a life or death situation out here, so.
Let me, let me speak for a moment to the material condition of the building, if I may, because we mentioned a few things and then Commissioner Lundee mentioned that when we were actually operating a facility a year and a half ago. Recognizing that we long knew that we were going to be leaving the county home business, but the transition took some time, so we deferred maintenance on the roof. The roof isn't falling out, it's not raining in the building, the roof isn't off the building, but if, if we're going to invest significant resources into redoing the operations there, that roof needs to be replaced. It's, it's been patched a lot, was on our capital docket some years ago, but we, we figured we were going to be exiting that environment, so we didn't put the money into a replacement, we did in some repairs. So, I don't want anybody to think that this is a building with a hole in the roof and it's raining in the building, far from it. The elevator issue, about three years ago, the elevator went down, it's a very old elevator. I, I, I had to find a company to custom build some controls for it to keep it in operation, keep it certified. It works, but it's one of those weaknesses in the building that if, if the elevator fails again, I'm not so certain that we could, we could get it repaired. It was 65 or 70,000, that was the custom work done on that elevator to keep it in operation. And of course, it's, it's critical to the, to the use of the building, it's right in the middle of the building, what people don't know, there's actually three floors on that building, they only usually see the first floor off the road, but there, there is three, three levels to that building. And, and so, the elevator is, definitely needs to be there even, even to comply with ADA requirements in this day and age. So, a couple of those things we mentioned, I don't want anybody to think the building's fallen down because it's not, it's actually generally in really good condition. But, but if you're going to put things in there, we, we need to take care of those things before we have problems down the road. But that's the beginning, you got to fix the building before you can put anybody in it. It's a great building, too, by the way.
It is a great building.
I'd like to thank my commissioners for all the work they put in the capital requests for that project, too. You guys spent a lot of time on that, so.
We also got to see the backup 911 way in the back of the building.
Right.
And, and how it's going to be so much nicer when we get our 911 center open and we have a, a better backup than what was back there. I think, and I think that may have been the first time you guys saw the backup 911.
No, I've been in there.
Matt, was that the first time?
Yeah, it was the first time I saw that.
It was kind of small and, you know, it was, that's, we've been, we've been problematic in that, too, so.
The last time we went, though, I, that was the first time I went down in the basement, like outside and then down into the basement.
Okay.
I had never been there, so.
Out through the back, with the loading dock area back in there. It's, it's a beautiful piece of property.
It is gorgeous.
It just opens onto the ravine back in there and, and it's, it's actually a, really an amazing piece that unless you do a lot of sledding down in there, we all sledged one time or another, but nobody really gets back into the, the ravines back there. It's, it's a beautifully, beautiful, unmolested area and what's really a congested part of Lorraine County in that corridor. So, hopefully we'll be able to bring that back. And we've had, had discussions with Metro Parks about some of that land back in there and joining it with some other lands they've had.
Yep.
With the exception, with the exception of the, the big carve-out piece we did on.
The 58th side.
Well, the 58th side has two big parcels and then there's a huge parcel in the back on.
Dewey Road.
Dewey Road, that, that we hope to be able to sell for some development back there. So, those initials will regain some attention in the spring. It's really hard to move that kind of property.
There is a sign up, you asked the other day, there is a sign up.
It is up, but I must have just missed it when I went by.
On the corner.
Okay, great.
Wonderful. Madam Clerk.
Going to do a real work now.
Under Resolutions Number One, Investments.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kelo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundee.
Aye.
Miss Kowski.
Aye.
Reparations.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kelo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundee.
Aye.
Miss Kowski. Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kelo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundee.
Aye.
Miss Kowski.
Aye.
Travel.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kelo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundee.
Aye.
Miss Kowski.
Aye.
Bills.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kelo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundee.
Aye.
Miss Kowski.
Aye.
Under the Commissioners, authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdiction of Lorraine County Commissioners.
Mr. Cordes.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelo. I do have several personnel issues, potential hires I want to just have a brief discussion about, collection center, 911, also pending legal matter and, make sure I got that. I understand from our representatives that we've concluded our negotiations with the sheriff's folks, they were agreeable to some of the positions we put out there, I'm not in receipt of those documents yet, but I want to talk about that with you to make sure that we're, we're all still on the same page before we go any further. And also, purchase of, of real estate that I'm still working on for you. So, all of those issues are allowable under the Sunshine Act for executive session discussions. So, I'd ask at the conclusion of our regular meeting, we go into executive session and we talk about all those matters that I've specified. Thank you.
Thank you.
Approve the reading of the minutes of January 13th.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kelo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundee.
Aye.
Miss Kowski.
Aye.
Adjust salary of a Larry Municipal Court, which reflects the county's 2/5 share for Greg D. Demnem, a bailiff which will retire March 2nd, and then James Ryder will be the new bailiff effective February 7th at a bi-week rate of 880 dollars and 34 cents.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Kind of hard to believe, Craig and I grew up together and he's retiring and out the door and I got decades to work.
Mr. Kelo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundee.
Aye.
Miss Kowski.
Aye.
Men's Resolution 1838 adopted January 8th, approving change in service agreement with Richard L. Bowen and Associates, contract for architectural services on the passenger rail platform project, and this amendment is just to reflect the correct account numbers.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
You want to talk a little bit about the project or?
If you'd like to, just said the change in the count number, so I didn't know if you wrote an add to it or.
It is, it is, but I can give you a brief, brief update. I, I did receive from, from the FTA of Chicago, a very detailed, two-page letter explaining our conversations. Commissioner Lundee mentioned what was going on in, in December. We had capital budget requests. I was, I was basically in a big wrestling match with the FTA over the funding streams for this project. They were, they were a bit dissatisfied with things, we were, we were dealing with other problems in the community and, and we weren't able to make the connection with what we needed to finish this with, from a funding perspective, which we, we did in December and January. But they got us on a very short leash. Short is kind, it's, it's a choker. And, and we have to make the deadlines that I've spoken to you about, that I, I did, I did that over Christmas with Ms. Davis, we, we, but anybody misses and there's not going to be any forgiveness, so we're keeping a real keen eye on, on all of this. I hope to have the bid packages out for all the prefab concrete next week. And we're also going to be going through, Friday we get the RFQs back for the project manager, Ms. Davis and I meet you on Monday to delve into those. We got to have that awarded, that's one of the criteria, getting the bid packages out for the first phase of this, last phase of the project there. And awarded before the end of March is another stipulation to maintain our funding. So, we're really working hard on this and, and Karen has been doing an exceptional job working with Norfolk Southern, trying to finish up that whole ground lease arrangement. We just can't, people think, well, we're going to put platforms in, it's not that easy. And, and we, I would say that, that we've, the railroad's been responsive. They're challenging to work with, but they've been responsive, so I want to continue that goodwill. We still have the, the Amtrak piece to finish up. There's been a lot of changes in the leadership, some of the folks that we worked with early on are no longer there. But the, the first piece has to be Norfolk Southern, we have to get all of that finished and, and we're getting closer and closer every day. Jerry's worked on the legal descriptions, we have a new piece for you, they have a little bit of what the indemnity clauses again, that we have to go over, but it's progressing well. November was, was, when I started working on this, again in November, when I sensed that there was some urgency that we were going to lose some of the funding, I did not think the FTA was going to give us a chance. I think we came to the guys and they said, look, we, you know, we've waited too long, we haven't been able to put the last piece of funding together, they're upset and I, but I want to thank them again and this board for saying, well, find a way of getting it done. And, and so, you'll be getting constant updates because I have to give them to the FTA, they, this weekly, they're, they're looking at this, too. So, once we get the big elements out of the way, I think they'll, they'll slack a little bit for us. But the project should begin, we should see quite a bit of movement in April and May, then the final bid packages, I'm anticipating late April into May for the final bid packages. We're going to use as much prefab as we can, the hoist is, we don't have to do a lot of pouring up there. I'm also logistically trying to figure out how to keep the center open because we do have a number of bookings to use the rooms. And also, we have Greyhound coming through there and I have Transit coming through there and, and so, I'm, I'm looking at, as I've informed you a couple of weeks ago, I'm looking at where we're going to stage, how we're going to do this construction. Not only do we have to worry about not getting hit by a train as it comes through, you realize the other side of that track belongs to BASF and there's an easement there for, for the railroad, but we have to, we need to operate from both sides to put these platforms in. The, the total project, Norfolk Southern required us to put two platforms in and reserve a third right-of-way to the track that doesn't really exist right now, it's, it's a right-of-way there for another track. So, we have to leapfrog over that because they said they may want to put a third rail in sometime and, and so, excuse me, I mean, third rail, a third rail system.
Right.
The, the, so, this is, this is going to be some kind of Herculean effort, trying to work from the back, from the backside, the front side and get all this lifted into place and, and get those platforms set. And then, of course, we have the big sky bridges and so forth. It's, it's going to be, it's going to be, it's going to be fun to watch, but it's going to be a real, a lot of anxiety. And we have to maintain full freight traffic while doing this. No stopping the freight traffic whatsoever is going to be allowed while we try to build this thing. And, and if you don't realize how much freight comes through here and they do double stacks Amtrak only stops at one track, one platform, but Norfolk Southern decides what, what rail they're on. And they won't commit to just moving the one rail to pull into a train station. So that thus, that expanded the project significantly. And, and so I think it's probably take about a year with the construction, maybe a little longer, but, but we'll have to see because there's gonna be a lot of stoppage. Whereas people are moving in and we have a lot of requirement for signaling on both ends. Of course, the trains run both ways. And we have some work to do, to, on the beginning of those bridge embutments over there because the platforms go, go out a considerable way. I will keep you up to date as I know more.
Well, significant projects. You take the county courthouse, the 911 building, the drug cast force building, now the train station, possibly Golden Acres, the opioid dollars. We've got significant capital.
New Health Department building?
Huh? A new Health Department building?
We're, we're deep into that.
Something with the parking garage maybe eventually?
I, I just let the contract for the engineer to resurvey the parking, yeah, yeah. It's, it's that cloning machine you have in your office that we use for our staff.
Yeah.
But we, we do have a lot underway and, and we're gonna be doing significantly more. I also will be probably next week and week after discussing issues with, with the dog kennel. I, I promised one of the commissioners some time ago that I would find a way of putting up a new dog kennel facility.
Matt is so demanding. I actually talked about that leadership for Lorraine County this morning. Projects upcoming, the dog kennel being one of those.
The, the, so I'm, I'm working, that's silently on that, but the, it was not a suitable build when it was built. But it got us down the road. That, that was, it's been twenty years now. The, the, we need to have a proper facility. We cannot have cages stacked on top of each other with urine running down into a bottom cage and it was a mess.
Yeah, it was a mess.
And, and so when I came back to Lorraine County, I saw what a mess that was, but it, it was what it was and we had to use that facility at least to exhaust it. Because it was paid for with, with dog kennel money. But now we're gonna do a much better job. But I'll be working through the year on that as soon as we get some breathing room. But of course that's gonna, we have to look at funding. We have to look at how those things are. We can advance funds to the, to the dog kennel to, to, to build a facility, but we cannot fund from the general fund. There's a, there is a preclusion that allows, does not allow that. So I've been going through all the numbers, working on everything and I, I got a MAXIMUS report I need to go through with you. And talk about some options and where we want to, where we want to go with that. So that, that's gonna be probably the next couple of weeks we'll be talking about it out here.
Good.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Mr. Kelo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Miskowski.
Aye.
We're contracted by Face Meyer Landscaping LLC, going in an amount of six hundred and fifty-six thousand, eight hundred and seventy-four dollars and eleven cents for Lake Avenue Stream and Wetland Restoration Project. Sixteen bids received, this being the most responsive complying with specifications. Issue notice to proceed on or about February twenty-seventh and complete April thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. Authorized administration notify the auditor to release retainers at completion of project.
So moved.
Second.
Mister Romantic, if you could come up and give an update on this large project.
Finally.
Finally.
Is this where we vacate all those roads on Lake Avenue?
Yes, yes, yes. Well, they were paper roads.
Right.
Well, good morning, Board. And thank you on behalf of all the kind words you said about my staff and I earlier in this meeting. Thank you. Now to get onto the real business. As you said, finally, this is a project that's been working on steadily for about the last three and a half, four years. Starting with the engine, County Engineers Office and Township Trustee identifying potential for land. And then going through all of the, the various things it would take to acquire it, finding out that it gets logged while we're in the process of taking title. Or just before we take title. And then having to renegotiate and work with that to reduce the price so we could cover some of the costs and the increased expense. Continuing to work with the administration, with the board, with the township, we were able to get some money from Ohio EPA, two hundred and ninety-five thousand to be exact. Then we went to engineering, were able to get that awarded. We got our engineer's estimate, came in a little higher than we thought. Maybe they were being a little conservative to make sure we would actually get awarded going out. Our engineer's estimate was nine hundred and two thousand dollars. I swallowed hard when I looked at that number. But we went out to bid, working with purchasing here, and we pushed that out everywhere we could. We Facebooked it, we emailed it to previous bidders, we had it out on every list. I'm not sure how many people actually picked up sets of plans. But I know we were constantly sending new down and we did get sixteen complete sets. And we were, we ran the gamut, probably almost every hundred thousand dollar increment or cup, twenty thousand dollar increments. From very low to up over a million dollars. So the estimate wasn't far off. We just had very good, very good timing and we had a lot of hungry contractors. Sixteen bids, nine of them came in under the estimate, one came right on, and then we had a handful that were above the engineer's estimate. This project will actually, because of the nature of it, we're gonna be restoring fourteen hundred lineal feet of stream that had been channelized. We're gonna create a floodplain. What that's gonna do is it's gonna give a water a place to go rather than shooting down the ditch right to Sheffield Town Hall and then into Lorraine. We're gonna build wetlands. Again, we're gonna give more opportunity for water to spread and to stay back. And then as it's sitting there slowing down, it's gonna drop its sediment, it's gonna drop its heavy metals. The wetland plants there are gonna actually pull the nutrients out of the water, the nitrogen that's creating such a problem, phosphorus that are creating such a problem in the western basin. So we're protecting our water resources. We're reducing the incidence and the severity of flooding. And we're actually doing it with leveraging state and federal funds through the three nineteen grant and using stormwater funds. The Stormwater District Board, as you may recall, advanced five hundred thou, or deposited five hundred thousand dollars into the, this account to be both used as local match and as an advance. So that we can keep the project moving quickly, get our contractor paid so we keep him happy with his price and keep him coming back. And then also to give the, the state time to reimburse us again, two hundred and ninety-five thousand. So this has been a great project. It's been one that's taken a lot of twists and turns. But we are at the point. And the one thing I would ask, or if you could please indulge, is maybe shorten the time for the notice to proceed to go. I noticed it was February twenty-seventh. I think we might be able to issue a notice to proceed quicker than that, if at all possible.
Do you have a date you're suggesting, Don?
I, if we.
Why don't you just leave it to TBD?
Yeah, I mean, if, or if you make it today, on or after today. And that way we can get it out as quickly as possible and get our contractor to work. It'd be the only thing I would ask.
It, it, you know, Commissioners, this, this, this started out as bad. Let me just say bad. And you heard me speak to a lot, and it got worse. And you may, you heard me speak to a couple of weeks ago. Trustee Holzman went over and kicked over a couple Beaver dams and flooded Sheffield Township Hall. It really didn't quite happen that way, but it was part of it. Because a lot of water was being retained upstream because of the Beaver dams. And when they took them out, that added, that added to already a big problem that was going on. And of course that runs down Clifton all the way down to the Thirty-Six Street ditch. It fills in down there and it flows all the way up to the, to the, to the lake. It's been a bad area for flooding over there for a long, long, long time. But we thought we were going to obtain this land and basically go in there and do a retention. And actually it wasn't just retention, we're gonna do retention and some detention back there. That's really, what is that? You dig a big hole in the ground and you let it fill up with water and then you slowly release the water so you don't flood. That was supposed to be a very easy project to do. And then of course, because of the logging that went on, unbeknownst to us, and, and they did not restore the area after the logging, they, they actually, not purposely, but did create wetlands. Well, that was the end of digging a hole in the ground because EPA is not gonna let you, the Army Corps will let you. I don't think Army Corps is in that, are they?
They were in that as well.
Okay, the, the, so we had to, we had to take this failing project and figure something out. And I want to thank Don because we were working on the stream restoration up in Eaton Township. And doing that project, we said, well, why don't we try to do stream restoration here and that'll get us some of what we need. We, we came out with about sixty percent of what we wanted from detention.
I think we scored out a little better than that. We're actually gonna be holding back, I think, on the, the larger storms upwards of ten acre feet. So an acre foot is a foot of water over an acre, which is a substantial amount of water. And we'll be able, our plans right now, we're looking at holding back about ten acre feet.
Well, we got that. And of course, we, 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 we went after and we, we, we got the property adjacent to the Board of Elections. Most people recognize there's a big hole in the ground over there, but we're widening.
We're gonna make it bigger.
Make it bigger. We're gonna widen that. That'll assist. And then we're still toying and playing with the piece behind Sheffield Township Hall. Just trying to pick up some parcels back there. We've, we've, we've run into a little bit of a situation with, you know, folks recognizing now that we're in there wanting property and of course.
Prices.
Some challenges. But if it takes four, five, or six, or seven years, we'll, we'll start gaining those parcels at, at what we consider a fair price. Well, we'll just wait on the project back in there. We, we were able to transform this into a different kind of project. And the good thing was, we were able to get outside funding when we transformed this project. So I'm, I'm excited about this. And, and did we let the contract for the piece next to the water election yet? I know you and I were.
No, we are actually doing a little extra modeling just to make sure that we're getting the, the benefit we anticipated getting. So that's back with Hydrosphere right now. I anticipate us finalizing those plans. We're in February, probably March and be able to bid end of March or April.
That, that, getting that piece of property was, was, was good, but it took working with the land bank and the Port Authority and the Community Development Department. So, you know, but because it was in, it was tied up in federal liens and all kinds of misery that we were able to clean that out and get that parcel over for use. At least, at least the public doesn't know, I don't think they do, the Stormwater District is the Board of Commissioners. You'd just meet differently to deal with that issue. And, and the staff at the Stormwater Department is myself and Don and, and some folks from the Engineers Department that assist. And of course Jerry would, would just legal counsel with us. So, you know, we, we wear all those hats. We keep talking about, well, the Stormwater District did this, the Stormwater District did that. In essence, we did it ourselves, but we, we are, we are the staff of the Stormwater District. So there's a, there's a lot of, a lot of heavy pulling on the oars going on upstairs in Community Development. And, and I think that you're gonna see another great project here. But it's gonna take about a year, a little over a year?
Uh, probably a little over a year. You'll see trees come down immediately. And then right after the trees come down, then a lot of earthwork. And then after that, we actually have some planting to do, both trees, shrubs, and then seeds. And the project itself will then go under monitoring, but I, I believe it's through April of twenty nineteen.
We're gonna do the staking in the fall? Is that when we're?
Uh, we'll probably do that in the winter is the best time to actually do the staking. Yes, when everything's dormant and that way, when it warms up and the, the stick begins to thaw, it's in the ground and it has plenty of water.
Thank you, Don.
You're welcome. Much appreciated for all the support.
Restoration, you're, are you doing like the shelving that we did at that other place in Eaton?
Yes, it'll be very similar. We'll be restoring what was a ri, the original track to Clinton Avenue ditch. And then within that, we'll be putting in what they call riffles, which is the shelving. So you'll actually see the water kind of fall under or over rocks. Create maybe like a small rapid type of thing. And that provides oxygen and actually improves the water quality. And also those riffles pre, uh, pre, prepare, provide habitat for a lot of little bugs that the little fish eat that kind of go up. And eventually you get perch on your plate. So.
Pretty interesting.
Also, we should point out that there's no general fund money in this project.
Yes.
This is Stormwater District dollars from the fees that residents of the unincorporated area pay. And, and this is a project in the unincorporated area. So it's state, federal, and Stormwater District funds, no general fund dollars being used here.
Perfect. Thanks, Don. I'd like to amend my motion to change the date to as of today. Yes.
After today.
Thank you very much.
I'll second that.
Mr. Kelo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Miskowski.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Approve various change orders for the historic courthouse renovation project, the amount of eighteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one eight dollars. Change order two to South Shore Electric for cabling of cameras, five thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars and eighty cents, eighty-seven cents. Change order six to motor construction, fire pump room, door relocated, fourteen thousand, one hundred and fifty in new wood panels and beams, four thousand, five hundred and seventy-eight.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Any questions on this question?
No.
These are field conditions that we're coming upon. There's gonna be a couple more. Change orders as, as to finish up some of the work inside. I don't like change orders, but when the fire department comes in, they tell you they don't like where the door is.
You gotta do it.
They're not gonna give you a certificate of occupancy, but you don't have a choice. Everything in this building cost a ton to do because of the way the building is built and the age of the building. We're back, they made us put the fire pump and then we have to put the fire pump and they didn't like where the door was. Well, the door was there all the time, you know, it's, so it's a little frustrating, but we're, we're getting to the end of the road here.
As nasty and snowy and cold as it is this morning, they were up there working, tuck pointing or doing something up there on the sandstone. They're out there working this morning.
Yeah, I was a little surprised to see that, that exterior work was going on. I don't know what it was, but I too saw that yesterday they were out there too. I didn't have an opportunity to find out what we're doing on the exterior, especially given the cold conditions. I suspect there may have been a problem with the repair to the roof over in that corner where they were. So I, I just haven't had time to stop and think about it much, but I'm going to. I didn't know we were doing any elevated work, at least until the springtime.
Mr. Kelo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Miskowski.
Aye.
Engineer advertised bids for various highway department materials, notice to be in the journal on February ninth and sixteenth and open at two P M. on February twenty-third.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kelo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Miskowski.
Aye.
Certified the annual county highway system mileage in accordance with the O R C. Section four five zero one point oh four for two thousand and eighteen. Mileage for two thousand and seventeen was two hundred and sixty-nine point six nine eight miles.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kelo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Miskowski.
Aye.
Proven entering general professional engineering service agreement with adaptive engineering group amherst not to exceed ten thousand to assist with engineering associated with road and bridge projects, behavior in the engineer project account.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kelo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Cordes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. As a brief update, more specifically to Commissioner Kelo. We're in the Mr. Bud Dig for our LaGrange sewer.
Wonderful. I love sewers.
And work is progressing nicely there. So I, I believe we're gonna make our July, hopefully make our July commitment. I know there was some anxiety about how long this project's taken, but yeah, I will tell you that I'm still concerned that LaGrange doesn't have all their permitting in place. But they believe they can still take what we're sending even without being able to open the, the other piece of the, of the facility. But it's, it's a project that's going to bring, bring much needed relief to five hundred and thirty homes in Lorraine County.
I never understood. We do ribbon cutting for everything else, but not for a sewer. It's gonna take care of five hundred and thirty homes, fifteen hundred people approximately.
I can tell you why. Would you like me to tell you why?
Yeah, go ahead.
Because normally people are so happy and that we're helping them. In fact, this group came to us and solicited us. And, but they, that euphoria turns to anger after they figure out that they gotta, they're gonna pay for it. And so normally these things begin with everybody being nice to one another and it ends not so nice. The, the, I'm not saying that this one's gonna go that way.
They gave us a standing ovation in there.
Standing ovation.
First time it's ever happened in all our years.
You haven't charged them yet.
Right.
The, so that people don't miss, I, I'm making a conscious effort to talk about how things are funded. Because there's too much misinterpretation in that. This project's being paid for by the residents. They're, they're gonna, going to be assessed for the sewer. It's a forced main all the way up into LaGrange. I don't really like forced mains, but this was an urgency that we had no options on. The, the, the onsite work that's being done, they're going to pay for that too. They had the most incredibly depleted onsite system that I've ever looked at, pictures from the cameras. It was just holes. It was, it was just terrible. And their plant was constantly out of compliance, constantly not able to meet the needs of the residents down there. But, you know, once they start paying the bill for that, it goes on the, on the duplicate, I'm not sure they're gonna be as happy even though they came to us.
Yeah, but no one else is really gonna give them the financing and at the rate they got it from us, I don't think they could have worked out an arrangement like that.
Financing that was less than two percent by going through various federal agencies. And we, we beat this down as much possible. Plus there's an additional, you know, potential buildable, three hundred lots down there. As those lots get built, the, the money from that goes to the association that'll be spread out over the residents there. Because there, we had to build this for the eight hundred and fifty or eight hundred and twenty lots that were out there, even though only about five thirty have built out. So if they see, if they see development down there, now they have sewers, because development stopped down there because there was no additional ability to sewer any more homes. They couldn't even deal with what they had. I know of one, one developer that has a hundred lots down there that they've been talking to like Brian Holmes and so forth about potentially building down there. So this, this may, this may encourage that and a lot of that money will come back to the residents, to the association for the costs that are being outlaid on this sewer. So it's, it's a good partnership. If you want to have a ribbon cutting ceremony, we can certainly do something.
Just kidding, just kidding. I just, I, the sewers are so important, not only for the residents, but also for any future development in there. Again, the three hundred other possible homes that could be built, more families.
And the environment.
Yeah, exactly, the environment.
Well, you know, and they, they're, they're, they're sitting, they're only minutes from orders of findings. Remember, they were gonna, they've had significant cost to them down there. And all that hopefully will go away. We did the water meters and, and we got all that done. And, and so a lot of people don't think you can put sewers in in the wintertime, but it's actually a good time to dig. Because the heavy equipment doesn't mess up the ground as much when you're, when you're doing a dig. And, and so I, I'll bring you more progress as, as I know it on that project, but, but it is, as we speak, being constructed.
Jerry's smiling over there.
I was going to make a comment, but I...
Go ahead, Jerry.
I decided to...
What did our attorney, what was his famous?
Noodle.
Noodle. He's going noodle over things.
Noodle on things.
We're a noodle and coddle together.
In fact, I had a lead to conversation, because I routinely got frustrated because the noodling took too, too long for me.
Well, we finally got an agreement, so we're going to...
I was just going to say we could have a toilet flushing.
Yeah, exactly. Maybe do that on Baumhart Road and Route 82 someday.
Yeah, really.
So, that's enough on that. I know Commissioner Calo, you were a bit frustrated because it took so long, but, but there was a lot of moving pieces, a lot of, there was a lot of legal action involved, there's litigation, there was the, the high EPA was involved with orders and finding. It got very complicated very, very quickly.
Lorco tried to block it?
Well, we did, we did have some problems with, with Lorco blocking the change of the facilities planning area over to LaGrange, and, you know, we can make a long list of, of, of issues that came up, but we never gave up. We never, actually, we never give up around here. We just grind and grind and grind.
Wear them out. We wear them out or beat them down.
Well, we can, we, we can overwhelm you with our brays, or we can grind you into the ground, either one, but...
I mean, again, that long project, and the sewers are so important to our community, wherever they may be, for future development. I mean, the recession is over, the economy is growing, we have builders talking about building new homes, we have companies coming here, I guess I think we need to really concentrate. Again, sewers aren't glamorous, but that's, you know, part of the heavy lifting to make everything else work, because you can't flush a toilet, you can't build anything, you can't employ anybody.
Look around 250.
Exactly. Erie County Commissioners, two out of three lost their jobs, but they financed the county, put 250, and now, as we always say, they're a recipient county for every dollar of...
About a dollar thirty-five, a dollar forty.
Returns to them in sales tax benefit from people showing up as an entertainment district. That's what we're trying to do here with Lorain County. We're between Cuyahoga County, Cleveland, and Erie County, major. We got to give people a reason to stop here, and whether we're going to be some entertainment, some development, some agriculture.
Some arts.
Without a sewer, we're not going to have things done where the growth isn't. We've got the most turnpike issues, I mean, the most turnpike exits in the state.
We have, and we have one that is the least utilized in the state.
Without a doubt.
On Baumhart Road. The, the, I'm actually surprised they haven't closed that, to be honest with you.
Well, it's automated now.
It is automated, but it's still, they got cost out there. They don't even cover the cost, any of that. The, the, and, and do recognize that I'm optimistic that sometime later into the spring, maybe early summer, we're going to be announcing some big plans for the west side of Lorain County. I've, I've, you've worked with me on that, and I've, I've met again with lots of parties. I'm not, I don't want to be premature, because we have developers' agreements in place, and we have to finish up working and all that, but I, I'm hopeful that we're going to see the ability to grow some portions of Lorain County right now, where there's abundance of land and abundance of resources, and nothing's happening because there is no services.
No place to flush a toilet, right, Jerry?
But, you know, there's, that's another big project that we've been working on for the last year, and I, I can't wait until we can really step on the accelerator and do the announcements there. But there's a lot of back, well, or, I was going to say pack room, but I wanted that to get interpreted wrong, there's a lot of pre-work that has to be accomplished before you can, you can celebrate that you're going to do something, and we're, we're grinding on that too. We got a lot of, a lot of people at the table, a lot of lawyers, a lot of, a lot of engineers, and, and we're trying to sort through, through all of that. It's just all in a day's business. But, I, you, we had a lot to say this morning, and we got to go into executive session. Thank you.
Mr. Renus?
Well, I don't have any wonderful projects to tell you about, but I do have one matter pending litigation.
Oh, yay.
Just not a regular day in the week without getting sued.
Oh, tell you.
Commissioners report.
Uh, well, last Thursday, I went out to Second Harvest Food Bank to talk to Julie Chase-Morfield, she's the director out there, about our campaign kickoff for Harvest for Hunger, which will officially begin on Tuesday, this coming Tuesday, February 13th, from four to six o'clock over at their Baumhart Road location. Got to see the Morning Journal's new headquarters, very nice, right there on the lake. So we met with both the newspapers, talked to the editor, editors, they did do a story in the Journal this morning, thank you for that. And I believe both newspapers will be there to help us spread the word about raising money for Harvest for Hunger. For every dollar that is donated, it provides five meals, so they do a wonderful job. Monday, I went out to Oberland to tour the new Family Promise, Lois Pizega is the, runs the organization out there, and they help families facing homelessness. They work with the families with children to help them get back on their feet so that they can find a home. And then I want to congratulate Bob White, who was sworn in yesterday as the Elyria Municipal Court, taking over for retiring Judge Lisa Lockgraves. I'm sure he will do a wonderful job, and condolences to the family of John Bender from Elyria. He passed away this past week, he was a great guy, and, like I said, condolences to his family and everyone that knew him well. End of my report.
Wonderful. Yeah, again, condolences to Sue and the family. John was a wonderful man, a friend of mine for many, many years. Served us well, his convictions were in the right place, and he just tried to do the best for the community overall. Yesterday, we met, Investment Advisory Committee meeting.
Oh, yeah.
The Board of Commissioners, a conference call from Columbus in regards to the finances of the county. Things are going well, there's a little discussion about the movement in the stock market, everybody's expecting some type of correction. We'll see if the federal administration takes credit for the ups and the downs, or if they just are in charge of the ups.
Yeah.
Also, I spoke at Leadership Lorain County this morning, at the City of Lorain. I'd like to thank that group. Superintendent Jeff Graham had invited me to speak there before. Normally, they came here and spoke, but they were trying to do it in Lorain, and then, because they had the mayor speaking, and then they were going to the Sheriff's Department with our tour today. Also, congratulations Kudrowski family, 21st Annual Punske Ball was this weekend, a sellout on a Saturday night, so they didn't compete with Super Bowl. Brand-new Punske flavor, Al Weiss, which is a German flavoring honoring Terry Kudrowski's mother who had passed away. And then congratulations, my Aunt Charlene Calo, repeat, she's the queen now, two years in a row of the Punske Ball. It's only happened once before, but always a pleasure to be there. I've attended that for years and years, going back to the old days with Judge Betleski, prior to being a judge.
Wow.
So it's always a great event. They really support the small business, that is Tim and Terry's focus. They talk about the small business, how important they are, and community involvement in keeping tradition up. Congratulations to them. End of my report.
Yeah, I'd like to send a...
Keep it short.
I'd like to send condolences out to the family of John Bender, his wife Sue, Jay and Jennifer. John was always a mentor to me. Spent a lot of time with John Bender, actually worked on all of his campaigns, writing his press releases and speeches and radio and TV, and, and, boy, we just had a lot of interesting conversations over the years about a lot of issues. But I've got to tell you, regardless of what the issue was, even when people were being nasty or saying crazy things, John was always a very patient person. He always believed there were two sides to every story, and, and he always treated people with dignity and respect. And, you know, I remember, the only time I think I saw John really angry was Jack Baird was running against him for state rep, and, and the party in Columbus wanted to send out some mail piece about Jack Baird that both John and I thought was a little too dicey to be sending out, wasn't quite appropriate, and they sent it out anyhow, and John was furious, I wasn't happy about it either, but, but that's, you know, just the kind of guy he was. He just felt like you could stick to the details, stick to the information, not make things personal, but he always treated people with, with respect, and was a true crusader for social justice. He just believes so much in, in treating people fairly and making sure that people were respected, treated with dignity, just a, just a great, great man, and he will be greatly, greatly missed. Congratulations to, to Bob White. Had a chance to work with Bob a lot when I was a state rep, and he was heading up the Township Association, and of course, he was very busy as a trustee there in Carlisle for quite some time, but congratulations on his appointment to the new muni court with Elyria, and also want to wish Judge Lisa Lockgraves the best. She's been a, a very good public servant and always took that job very seriously. Congratulations Tom Orlando on another great event that he had here recently over in Avon. And more details are going to be coming out about the transition team that we're working on, the, the Puerto Rico transition team, trying to reach out to the families who are possibly going to come to this area and call this area home. But a lot of great progress is being made, just so exciting when we're at the table together and working through the issues and building the partnership, and, in fact, the City of Lorain, not City of Lorain, the Lorain Library System recently presented El Centro, they gave it to Victor Lee Endry at our last meeting, a check for over $4,000 to help a lot of these families, and everybody was blown away, such a large amount of money, but, but it's, it's just been great, and it's, and we're planning on probably doing a media event at our next meeting later in the month to explain to everybody in the community just the things that we've been able to, to accomplish to try to help those families. And also this morning, I just want to say thank you to all the public employees who always work through the crazy weather, you know, our police and fires, we recognized earlier, but, you know, those folks that are out there pushing snow all the time. I got a real education when I worked for the City of Elyria about trying to plan in advance, and then the weather changes on you, and then the conditions get worse than what you thought they were going to be, and staffing, and having enough salt and keeping the trucks running, and it's, it's quite a logistical challenge all the time. But, you know, in this day and age where people want a bad-mouthed government, I hope you do remember, when you pull out of your driveway and you had to work on those snowy days, that government made that possible, and those workers work extremely hard. There's many days, especially here in February, I don't think they're going to get much sleep at all, because they're pushing snow all the time, but, but very dedicated city employees, county ODOT that are out there, and those are dangerous conditions operating those trucks. Can't thank them enough for all that they do. That completes my report. Mr. President?
Tuesday, we'll have our land bank meeting at 11:00. Board correspondents?
Won't the reading be waived?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Calo.
Hi.
Mr. Lundey.
Hi.
Ms. Kowski.
Hi.
Have a comment?
Anyone wishing to address the board this morning? Come on up, Jeff.
Good morning, Commissioners and members. I'm Jeff Baxter, 160 Burns Road in the City of Elyria. And I really want to talk this morning about transparency for citizens and community. And I think I'd start with just a kind of paraphrasing, some comments I heard this morning from, Mr. Calo, you mentioned you guys are going to have a lot to write for the paper, and I think you're probably referring to our Chronicle and Morning Journal associates here this morning, and that's a good thing, but that's only one way to reach the citizens, is through that paper, and it's a, it's a way that I think has a lot less impact than it did years ago. Mr. Cordes, you mentioned something about engaging our community, and I think that's a very worthwhile thing. That's a good thing to do. Mr. Lundey also me, said, "Community needs to know something. Community needs to weigh in on this." So, the transparency issue for me is this, is that Commissioner information is not taking advantage of the digital opportunity that you have in front. There's a good website, that's a good base, I think. I think that all the presentations that have been made this morning, those slideshows should be on that website.
Will be.
A day or two after the meeting.
They're going to be actually this afternoon.
Okay, but it's not always the case. It's not a standard mode of operation.
It, it depends on, on what it is.
Yeah, and, and if, if the video of this, if, if, of this meeting is also available on TV channels, that video also could be on that website. The accessibility by citizens will be much more improved if it's available on the website. Then you could put a Facebook link to it, and people can go click, click, and get right to it whenever they want to.
Let me address that for you.
Jim, Jim, it's public comment, it's not our...
Okay, you're right, never mind.
Yeah.
I want to talk to you about that afterwards, I'll explain something.
Okay, and I, I'd like to do that.
Sorry.
That's okay. And I think, you know, that's really the only transparency thoughts I had this morning, but I think that there was a missed opportunity for engaging the community with the fire and law enforcement memorial. I think that's news to the community, that that's being done and planned, and that there could have been some ability to engage. Other communities that have done something similar to that have, have done that. They've engaged the community somehow, they've let them know it's coming along, you know, maybe there's a paver's project, there's a way for people to help fund it, and things like that, and I think that was perhaps a missed, missed opportunity, that would have allowed citizens of the community to say, "Our commissioners really do care, look what, they're not doing this for us, they're helping, or they're allowing us to participate as well." So thank you.
Anybody else wishing to address the board this morning? Motion going executive session is outlined by the county administrator and assistant county prosecutor.
I'd second that motion.
Mr. Calo.
Hi.
Mr. Lundey.
Hi.
Ms. Kowski.
Hi.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorain County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Elyria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.loraincounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, and click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda. copy of the agenda.